Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Thursday, June 20, 2024. Please join me. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Galagos.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also present Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum. For the president's report, I have several announcements. First and foremost, perhaps, I am proud to announce that one of Riverside's own Dana Retke is set to play for USA volleyball team in the 2024 Olympic Games in Paris. Dana grew up in Riverside and graduated from Riverside Brookfield High School in 2017. She will be one of 12 players on the US Women's National Team during the Paris Summer Games. Her volleyball career more than speaks for itself, from being named the Illinois State High School Player of the Year in 2016, and earning the Big Ten Female Athlete of the Year in 2020 and 2022 with the University of Wisconsin-Madison. On behalf of the village, congratulations to Dana and her family, and best of luck Upcoming meetings at Riverside Township Hall, 27 Riverside Road include June 24 Historical Commission, June 26 Planning and Zoning Commission, July 8 Riverside TV Commission, July 8 Sesquicentennial Planning Committee, July 9 Landscape Advisory Commission, July 11 Police Pension Board, and July 15 Historical Commission. Please note that the village board will not meet at our normally scheduled first Thursday meeting, which happens to be July 4. Upcoming events: Movie in the Park is being held at Big Ballpark on June 21. Secretary of State Mobile Drivers Motor Vehicle Facility, Tech Mobile Facility will be in Riverside on Wednesday, June 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Quincy Community Center. Registration is full for this event. We were pretty much full within two or three days of announcement, which is exciting and shows what a great service this is for our residents. But due to this popularity, the village did reach out to Secretary of State's office and secured a second mobile DMV event for December 4 this year. Before we could announce the date, the waitlist from 6:26 filled the second event's registration. So if you're not already registered, we'll try again next year. But again, it's extremely popular, and we were able to fill up two dates when we only had one. July 3 Concert in the Park, of course, the big social event of Riverside every year is the July 3 Concert in the Park at Guthrie Park. Begins at 5:30 p.m. with the singing of the National Anthem by Riverside's own Jennifer and Madeline Pollock, followed by DJ Maximus from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. by the band Infinity. So again, everyone knows about the July 3 Concert in the Park. If you don't know, it's a great event, a great opportunity to meet your neighbors and have a wonderful evening and celebrate the anniversary of the United States. Then on July 4, Independence Day, there's a 5K run at 7:15 a.m. The race will start at the Water Tower. Race day registration will be available. July 4 Parade starts at 8:45 a.m. The parade route will travel from Big Ballpark to Guthrie Park. This year, the parade will feature a quiet zone for those with sensory challenges or sensitivity to loud sounds. That zone will be at the beginning of the parade at Big Ballpark. And also on July 4, Festival of the Park, following the parade at 10 a.m., is being held in Guthrie Park. And on July 12, Family Bingo Bash, Friday, 6:30 p.m. at Riverside Township Hall. And that concludes my president's announcements. Manager Francis.
Thank you. I just have one item to provide an update on. As some residents might have seen, Illinois Department of Transportation has posted different signage around the village about a scheduled detour related to the Forest Avenue Bridge resurfacing. The village has also shared that information on our website. Illinois Department of Transportation will work on the Forest Avenue Bridge, and that will begin on Monday, June 24, and is scheduled to be completed by August 10. Many may not be aware of this, but the bridge is actually IDOT's jurisdiction and is owned and maintained by them. The sidewalks on the bridge will remain open to pedestrians and cyclists during construction, and signage will be posted stating that the sidewalk is open. The village did make a request to keep the bridge open to limited traffic, however, due to the width of the bridge, that request could not be accommodated, as it would be unsafe for those completing the work on the bridge. The village engineer will do periodic visits and report any issues to the site manager. Additionally, there will be additional traffic enforcement in the areas of the traffic detours. I just wanted residents to be aware of that. Any periodic updates that we receive from IDOT, we will, of course, share via social media and also through our eFlash system. And finally, I just wanted to make note of a fabulous one sheet that was created of, and this isn't a comprehensive list, this is truly just a snapshot of the work that has been done by the village board and village staff over the past 12 months. And so what we'll be doing next year is, we typically do a village by the numbers in our Riverside Review, which is our newsletter that goes in the water bills, and next year, what we're going to do is actually dedicate the entire newsletter, not only to the accomplishments on one side, but we also do village by the numbers, which just educates residents on the volume of work and the different things that the village does throughout the year. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments for non-agenda items? Are there any residents in attendance who would like to address the board on non-agenda items? I see none, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, please read the consent agenda.
Approved voucher list of bills, June 20, 2024. Approved Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes, June 6, 2024. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes, Economic Development Commission Regular Meeting, March 13, 2024. Preservation Commission Special Meeting, May 9, 2024. Ad Hoc Sesquicentennial Planning Committee Regular Meeting, May 13, 2024. Landscape Advisory Commission Regular Meeting, May 14, 2024. Review and File Department Reports, Community Development, Finance, Police, Fire Police, Public Works, May 2024. A resolution authorizing the village manager to approve a change order in the amount not to exceed $85,000 for the purchase of additional water meters as part of the village-wide water meter replacement program, and a resolution approving an independent contractor agreement between the Village of Riverside, Illinois, and the Chicago Zoological Society for Police Department Support at the Brookfield Zoo Chicago's Roaring Nights Concert Series.
Thank you. Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, ask for a motion and second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Galagos, second by trustee Marshazga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. There are no department, board, or commission reports this evening. Move on to pending business. Motion to accept the Village of Riverside's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2023. Finance Director Zavala.
Good evening. Annually, the village is required by state statute to complete an audit of the financial statements. The village is currently in the second year of a three-year contract with Lauterbach &amp; Amon. The audit report has been completed and included in the packet for your review. The treasurer's report was published yesterday, June 19, in The Landmark, and the controller's report will be submitted by the end of the week. Some highlights from the audit are, the general fund ended the year with a surplus balance of $232,524. That is unassigned for future capital projects. There was a successful implementation of the new GASB 96 pronouncement regarding software subscriptions. The audit process is about six months long, and with the new pronouncement is not an easy feat. I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to the team of Lauterbach &amp; Amon for their collaboration and timely completion of the audit. With that, I will hand it over to Jamie Wilkie, partner of Audit Services at Lauterbach &amp; Amon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I certainly want to start my discussion this evening by thanking the staff. She has been an absolute pleasure to work with, finishing up this year's audit, so thank you so much, Yvette, for all of your hard work. I have added about 170 pages to your board packet tonight, so I do apologize in advance. I promise not to go through all of those pages in detail, but I do want to point out a few key sections within the document that I always think are of interest to our boards. First of all, I want to start off with page seven of the report, and as I give page numbers this evening, it will be the actual page numbers on the bottom of the audit document itself, not the PDF page number, just to clarify. Page seven provides a copy of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So as Yvette indicated, state statute does require that each year you go through an independent audit, but that requirement is what we would call a basic audit. What the village does each year, then, is actually submit the audit to really the highest level reporting you can have, which is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement Award. So that creates a couple of extra, what I would call transparency sections within the audit document, and I'll provide a couple page number references for those. Page seven is a copy of the award for last year's audited financial statements. As part of all of the submissions that have to happen through the end of this month, we will be submitting this year's audit document to that program as well, and we obviously anticipate receipt of that award. Our firm has 100% retention rate of that award. After the certificate of achievement, on pages 10 through 12 of the audit document, you'll actually find our independent auditor's report. There's really two goals each year when we come in to conduct the audit. Number one is to issue an opinion on the materiality of the financial statement, so that's really what an auditor is opining on each year as part of the engagement. So we have issued what we call an unmodified or clean audit opinion. That is the highest level we can issue to the village each year, and again, that indicates that the financial statements are materially correct. As part of the audit process, the second goal is really to look at the overall internal control environment of the village. So we are required to take a look at things like policies, procedures. We engage in third-party confirmation of significant balances. We look to ensure that the staff has the appropriate supporting documentation, for example, for certain balances and transactions. Certainly, through that detailed testing, if there were any areas of concern or red flags, we would unfortunately have to have that conversation tonight, but I'm happy to report we had no such findings. So truly the cleanest opinion that you can receive each year. I do want to point out immediately after the audit opinion, a section labeled Management's Discussion and Analysis, or MDNA. You'll find this on pages 14 through 27 of the document. As I indicated, I think you've got 168 pages, and unfortunately, our government audits tend to keep growing each year. That is a lot of information to digest, especially from a board member perspective. So those 14 pages in the MDNA really do serve as the executive summary. I do encourage our boards to read that section in detail as you are able. It really does provide a nice synopsis of the key results for the year, as well as comparables to the prior fiscal year, so you can get a flavor for how this year looked in comparison to last year as well. As Yvette indicated, overall, it was a positive year for the village, so when we talk about total equity or the total value of the village, that did, in fact, go up in comparison to the prior year, and you'll see some of the detailed discussion around that on those 14 pages. The last section I want to point out starts on page 131, and will actually take you through the very last page of the document. I like pointing this out because I am well aware that most folks don't get that far into the audit, unfortunately, but page 131 to 168 provides what we call the statistical section. I always like pointing this section out to our boards because there is really a wealth of information at the very back of your audit. Financial results for the past 10 years, overall debt position for the last 10 years, things such as property taxes, operating indicators, number of full-time employees. So all of these schedules are part of the Certificate of Achievement Award and provided in that very last section of the document. I'm happy to kind of stop here and open it up for any questions or other commentary that the board might have this evening.
Trustee, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
And our staff for our work. This is important function of local government that we do every year to make sure that, just to kind of double-check and make sure that we're doing everything properly. Let's see, do we need action on this item, or just?
We need a motion.
We need a motion. Would someone like to make? I should ask the public. I see no one in the audience, so I assume no public comment. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual audit?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Mateo, second by trustee Galagos. Clerk Soul.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Berkeley Road Traffic Update. Director Buckley.
Good evening, President Pollock, members of the board, and manager Francis. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about something we've been talking about for a while now, and that's Berkeley Road. Back in June 15 of 2023, the board instructed us to give quarterly updates regarding Berkeley Road as to some of our improvements and things that we were doing to try to minimize traffic and control speed on Berkeley Road. These updates have included traffic and speed counts for vehicles traveling on Berkeley Road, and since the start of these updates, we have made several improvements to that area, which include signage, increased police patrols and enforcement, especially when it comes to some of the parking violations. And in doing so, the progress that we've made in reducing the traffic flow on Berkeley has been pretty evident with our recent studies that we've done there. Our studies are, we use our traffic counter, which gives us the number of vehicles that travel by the traffic counter, as well as the speed of those vehicles as they go by. Our latest traffic count, we did it from May 13 through May 22. There were a total of 1,164 cars that traveled on Berkeley. The average speed of these vehicles was 17 miles per hour. While doing that, the highest speed we found traveling down Berkeley was 32 miles per hour. That was one vehicle. There were two vehicles that, I'm sorry, there were two vehicles that were at 32 miles per hour, one vehicle at 31 miles per hour, and as you look in the packet, it lists the other speeds also, but I think there were a total of 11 vehicles that traveled over 26 miles per hour, which, to me, is a very low number. I'd like to see everybody at 25 miles per hour doing the speed limit there, but those were a couple vehicles that did travel over the speed limit, which is 25 miles per hour on that street. Also during this time, over the last year since we started all this, we've done a lot of sign improvements out there. We've put up stop signs at the corner of Byrd and Berkeley with a crosswalk that was installed there also. We've done right, no right turn, I'm sorry, right turn only signs at the dispensary curb cut, pushing traffic onto Berkeley going towards Harlem. We moved the do not enter signs from Harlem Avenue down to the alley at Berkeley. This was done mostly because of the townhomes, allowing them access to come down Berkeley when they do leave the townhomes, because the do not enter signs do state on there that it's for authorized vehicles only, which are authorized to residents that live in that area on Berkeley. We put up signs that notified that the area is under surveillance. With Starbucks being on the corner, there's a system that they have in and around their facility. We're able to get access to that if need be. And we've done these quarterly traffic counts, which have shown that a lot of our improvements that we have done have worked, and they have reduced the number of vehicles traveling on that street, and definitely has shown that it's reduced the number, the speed of vehicles traveling on that street. So at this time, it's a recommendation of village staff to conclude with these updates, although this will still be an area that we are always keeping an eye on. We do regular monitoring there, especially because of the Starbucks business that's on that corner. We make routine passes through that parking lot, checking on the business, making sure everything's fine in that area, and also, we're watching for vehicles that are traveling on Berkeley, as well as all the streets in the area, to make sure that they're abiding by our traffic laws.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Buckley. Any questions for Matt? Any further direction from the board? Seeing none, I think, thank you for monitoring this over the years. I'm sure if new information or new situations come up, we can revisit this, but that will conclude the quarterly reports that the board had asked for.
So between myself, manager Francis, director TAB, we've spent a lot of time standing on Berkeley, a lot of times right at Harlem Avenue, just watching traffic, seeing, coming up with different ideas of how we could approach, just some different things we could do. We are still going to put up one sign at the end of the alley at Berkeley, pushing traffic towards Harlem. That's in the works right now. Director TAB is working on that. So as things come up and we find stuff like that, we can do something small that helps alleviate other issues, we're going to stay on top of that and do it also.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an ordinance approving amended site plan relating to fences and parking at 2710 South Harlem. Assistant Manager Monroe.
Good evening. So this is a continuation of the item discussed by the village board at the June 6 board meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission had addressed the request from 2710 South Harlem for removal of the fence, is shown in part of their site plan that had been approved. Village Board at the last meeting had indicated a, that staff should prepare an ordinance for approving a major amendment to the site plan for removal of the fence, and that is what is before you this evening. I'll note that there's one revision to what's in your packet, and I will allow attorney Pickrell to address that item.
Thank you. It looks on exhibit D to the ordinance, it's a document titled Unconditional Agreement and Consent. This document should be somewhat new for everybody. This is a document that our office often uses in conjunction with zoning relief. Really does two things. It makes sure that the person who's receiving the zoning relief acknowledges that everything was done properly, and secondly, it requires that they indemnify the village in case there's a lawsuit in connection with the zoning relief. Seems like a big ask, but there's a logic behind it, and it's good for everybody, because first off, it's good for the village, because we get a financial assurance and protection that if we're sued, we'll be indemnified. It's also good for the person receiving the zoning relief, because the village has no obligation to defend these lawsuits. If we grant zoning relief and we are the proper defendant, and if somebody were to sue the village, we could do nothing, and as a result, the zoning relief would be, they would just win by default. And so if the individual wants to defend that zoning relief, this grants them that opportunity. And so this is something, first, I just, I brought it up because this is something I'll be including in more, you know, grants, special use permits, planned unit developments, things like that. I actually spoke to Dr. Endet this afternoon about this, because this was something new to him as well, and his position was, well, if somebody sues, I don't want you defending it, and I won't defend it myself either, so I'd rather not have that at all. In light of the fact that he would just not want a defense of it, I said, well, why don't I rework this into something that'll be mutually agreeable? And he found that to be acceptable. And so if the board was inclined to approve this ordinance tonight, I would suggest doing so, subject to revisions to exhibit D that are acceptable to both the village manager and the village attorney.
Thank you.
I'll move then.
So this was, we voted to basically direct staff to prepare this ordinance at the last meeting. It was a four to one vote. We have a different group of trustees, and I always, when that happens, I want to make sure that the outcome doesn't change in fairness to those who are not here and were not at the last meeting. And I understand that, from talking to trustees, that we should be okay. So I just wanted to clarify that. So any further, any questions for Assistant Manager Monroe or for the attorney Pickrell? Seeing none, if someone liked, and there's no public to comment, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
With the conditions?
With the condition that I mentioned.
With the condition mentioned, yes, thank you.
Second.
Motion by trustee Galagos, second by trustee Mateo. Any further discussion on the motion? Clerk Soul.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
New business? We have no new business? Trustee reports? Are there any trustee reports this evening?
I have one. So the beginning of summer is upon us, and that means getting back on the river. The Eighth Annual Riverside Regatta will take place on Sunday, June 30. This is open to the public, it's free, so if you have a kayak or can borrow one, you can meet us there at Skus Grove in North Riverside at 10 o'clock in the morning, and we should be exiting the water at Sony Ford in Lyons, and we'll have refueling and rehydration at one of our very own establishments at the Sand Trap afterwards. So this is an excellent event that the Lyons Club and the American Legion jointly put on together, and we welcome the public to it.
Thank you. Sunday, June 10.
Thursday.
June 30, I mean, yes. Sunday, June 30. Thank you.
Okay. I have one as well.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that I attended the Riverside Farmers Market on behalf of the village at the trustees' table on Wednesday. I had the opportunity to speak in great detail to more than a dozen different residents, each of whom had different, you know, issues that they were interested in and exploring, so I really want to thank everybody for coming out and doing that, and having a chance to, you know, communicate with your village board, which, you know, a lot of people don't know that they have that opportunity, but, you know, we will be at the farmers market at various points throughout the summer. And some folks wanted to get involved with C4, which is inviting people to join us in the parade this year with, you know, clean green theme, which will be a lot of fun. We have a meeting this coming Saturday for people that are specifically interested in the parade, and then a general C4 meeting Thursday of this coming week at the Riverside Public Library. It will be at 6:30 rather than our normal, you know, 7:00 p.m. meeting time, just because of the library's early hours this summer. We also had people who were interested in getting involved in the Sesquicentennial Committee as volunteers. We do have a public call going for people who are interested in helping us develop the programming for 2025, which will be the village's 150th year or anniversary of the incorporation of the village. So lots to do and lots of ways that our residents can get involved, so just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from the trustees? The board does have a need for executive session this evening to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of village property. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion is made.
I'll second. I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Galagos, second by Trustee Marshazga. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.